Okay, and we're going live in one, and two, and three. And we should be live. Kristen?
Wonderful. So I do want to thank everyone for showing up tonight for our District Seven Candidates Forum. It's so important that we do show up for these few opportunities that we have to hear from all of the people who are running for office. It's so important that we do show up for these few opportunities that we have. And you are hoping to represent us in City Hall. So this is a forum that came together with a wonderful coalition of partners. So I want to acknowledge everyone who's with us, which is Ward's Four, Eight, Nine, Eleven, Twelve, our Democratic wards, Chester Square Neighborhood Association, Fenway C D C, Fenway Civic Association, N double A C P Boston, Nowestra Comunidad C D D C, Project Right, The South End Forum, Urban Edge, Fenway Community Center, Franklin Park Coalition, Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association, Madison Park C D C, Mass Vote. And we also want to just acknowledge that there is a lot of attention and there is a lot of energy and emotions around this race. And we do keep the, uh, we will be keeping the chat open and we do hope that we use the chat responsibly. If we do see any abuse of any kind inside of the chat, we will be ejecting people as we need to because again, we are here to have a good, informative, and welcoming conversation with all of these candidates. So you respect everybody, to give respect to each other. Uh, Jonathan, would you like to introduce?
Yes, thank you so much. My name's Jonathan Cohen. I chair the Ward Four Democratic Committee, um, which has parts of back way Fenway in the south and delighted to be working with all of the the co-sponsors of this event. And thank you for joining us just shy of two months until the preliminary election. Delighted to be able to introduce our moderator for the evening, former city councillor Tito Jackson, who formerly represented District Seven. Uh, Tito was active in the community before, active in the community during, and still active in the community as a great voice. Uh, kind of, uh, brings great knowledge and civic experience. Uh, and we're very excited, uh, for, that he accepted our invitation to moderate tonight's event. Uh, surrounded the event tonight will be, this event will be recorded. It will also be made available. Um, it's going to be streamed live on Facebook. So if you want to find it afterwards, we watch something or questions, and I'm sure all of the candidates would be happy, uh, to answer any of your questions afterwards as well. Without further ado, I'm going to take myself and Kristen off spotlight and then bring Tito and the candidates on spotlight.
As we do that, I want to thank, uh, all of the wards who have come together, um, to actually pull this, uh, together. I want to give props, um, to all of the candidates. Um, it is a big deal to run for office. And I think, um, a lot of folks talk about running for office, but there is absolutely nothing like having your signs up. Sometimes it come down. I'm not going to go there, uh, having, um, to raise money and ask friends, family, and loved ones, um, and, and have those pregnant pauses, um, in order to, uh, get the resources needed. And most importantly, uh, to connect with and contact voters. Um, and, uh, we have obviously been through really a historic time when it comes to that particular issue. Um, I thought I had to go through a lot when, when I, when it snowed, uh, almost every Tuesday and Thursday in two thousand, uh, eleven. Uh, nothing like, uh, what, uh, this historic group of folks, uh, is doing. So I give you props, kudos, and I send you love and light, uh, for the work that you are doing. Uh, and, um, your willingness to step up for our community. And so, um, I, I get to, I get to do this because I'm, I'm the host. I'm going to give you guys and ladies a round of applause, uh, right now. Uh, and I'm going to give you your flowers right now, uh, for stepping up and being part of this process. And thank you all so much. That's my sixty seconds. Um, and so hopefully, um, we can, uh, actually deal with this, the, the timekeeper issue. Um, can our time, timekeeper, um, avail herself?
Well, there's, uh, there's the timer showing now. So that will give a ten second warning and then it will, uh, ding when the minute's up. And then after that, people will be muted if they run over.
Okay. So I don't have to be the bad guy. So, uh, we want to make sure that blue sky timer, which on my screen is black right now, but, uh, as this goes, um, you will have for this first question, an opportunity to, uh, answer in sixty seconds. Um, and, um, really what we'd, what we'd like folks to do is, um, to do their opening statements. Uh, we're going to give you an opportunity to go ahead and sell yourself. This is your, your elevator pitch. Uh, and an opportunity for folks to move forward and let us know who you are, where you're from, and what you plan to do. I'm very, very excited to, as the twenty-first century philosopher once said, uh, MC Hammer, uh, let's get started. Uh, and so, uh, we're gonna go, uh, uh, so know that we're not going to go in this order for the whole time. I'm going to go from the, what we have on my screen. And then we're going to rotate. Um, I like to add a little, uh, seasoning spices, uh, to things. Um, and so we're going to rotate and then also, uh, we're going to mix in, uh, a, a, uh, list of pre-prepared, uh, long-form questions, not too long, ladies and gentlemen. Um, but also, uh, we have some lightning round questions, uh, yes, no, no, maybe so, um, and potentially some numbers, uh, in that mix. So we're going to keep it zesty, uh, and flavorful, just like this amazing group of candidates. Uh, so we're going to actually, uh, go ahead and start again sixty seconds. Uh, we are going to start with Tanya Fernandez.
Tito, I'm just going to jump in. The timer, uh, something's going wrong with the timer. So if it, uh, isn't showing, I will give verbal warnings.
Okay. That's great. So are you going to do thirty, thirty, fifteen?
I'll do ten, ten seconds and then one times up.
Okay, there, there we go. So, uh, listen up for, for those ten second warnings because, uh, we kind of have like showtime at the Apollo. Uh, we, we got, we, we're going to snatch you off stage. Um, so we are going to go, uh, first with Tanya Fernandez Anderson. And, and, uh, please correct me if my, my, uh, pronunciation of anyone's name, uh, is, is wrong. Um, it is critical, uh, that we honor a folk's name and where they came from. Please proceed, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Tito.
Oh, uh, thank you, everyone, for participating in this process and, uh, thanks for having me. My name is Tanya Anderson, and I'm running for city council to represent my community. I'm an immigrant and, uh, immigrated to the U S just at the age of ten from Cape Verde, West Africa. At the age of thirteen, I started working and by fifteen, I had saved enough money to retrieve my siblings from Cape Verde. I graduated from John D. O'Brien High School. I dedicated twenty-nine years in human service at the Roxbury Multi-Service Center, Massachusetts Alliance of Portuguese Speakers, Project Hope, Dimming Community Health Center, Boston Public Schools, and Noah's Advocate. I am a small business owner and an artist. I faced deportation and experienced homelessness by the age of twenty-three. I'm a mother of two and a foster mother to seventeen children. And I believe that I have the open mind, patience, stamina, and compassion that it takes to make some good trouble. I am running for Boston City Council to fight for policies that will create equitable solutions for all. Affordable housing, quality, public education, universal access for.
Okay. Um, I will note, uh, that we did not hear the ten, the ten second. I, at least I did not hear the, the ten second. Um, so if we can, if you guys can help me out, uh, with that. Again, Ms. Anderson, thank, Mrs. Anderson, thank you so much, uh, for, uh, that, that answer. Um, next up, we have, uh, Dr. Brandy Brooks. If you could open with your sixty-second, uh, uh, opening statement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, um, for hosting this tonight, and thank you for having me. Again, my name is Dr. Brandy Brooks, and I use she/her pronouns. I was born in South Carolina, raised in Georgia, and developed in Roxbury. My entire life has been of service to others and my community. As an educator and a mental health advocate, I've supported English language learners and those obtaining their high school certification, as well as working on public health issues ranging from suicide prevention, older adult falls prevention, intimate partner violence, youth violence prevention, and providing safe spaces for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning, asexual, intersex, and allied young people. I've done it, uh, at the city level, at the state, and nationally as well. I'm running because our district is at a crossroads, and we need somebody ready on day one, and I am that candidate.
Thank you very much, Dr. Brandy Brooks. Uh, next up, uh, Ms. An, Angie Camacho. Sixty second for your opening.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to be here. My name is Angelina Angie Camacho, candidate for Boston City Council, District Seven. I am a longtime service leader, Afro-Latina, single mom, and partner in the struggle for our people because it's part of my story. I'm running because there's a disconnect between community and opportunity. The haves are taking more than their fair shares. The have-nots cannot connect to resources, and those in the middle are left scratching their heads. Our people need more than a hint of hope, and that's why I'm here. Because in this election, experience matters. I have deep service experience in public health, education, financial empowerment, affordable housing, job access, youth programming, and other key issues in our district. I hope to earn your vote because we need a leader who can follow up and follow through on the things that are important to you. Again, I am Angie Camacho, and I hope to earn your vote through events like this on September fourteenth. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Angie Camacho. Uh, next up, we have Joa Dipina, your sixty-second opening statement.
Good evening and thank you all. For having me and thank you for the forum. My name is Joa Dipina. I am a longtime resident of Roxbury. I've been here twenty years in the heart of Grove Hall, um, ensuring, uh, that this community stays safe. Uh, I've taken many measures in this community and other communities to, um, ensure that things are being done correctly and holding, um, people in public office accountable and making sure that our community is being treated equally. Uh, we have many disparities that face our community. We have many different, um, ethnics living in our communities, so nothing part of all kind of people, and I believe our voice needs to be heard. D seven has gone a long time without a real voice and a voice that's going to stand up against all of the others that don't feel like our community should have, everything else that everyone should have. So I look forward to having your vote on September fourteenth to be your voice.
Thank you so much, Joa Dipina. Next up, we have Marissa Luce. And this is your opportunity and your sixty-second opening statement.
Thank you. My name is Marissa Luce, and I'm excited tonight to connect with District Seven constituents to earn your vote. I would like to thank the moderator, city councillor Tito Jackson, and organizers for putting together this forum. I'm a proud, long-term resident of District Seven, Roxbury native, wife, mother, and small business owner with over twenty-five years of community building and nonprofit leadership experience, and currently serve on several boards and committees across the district. I am running because I want to bring consistency, transparency, to uplift and resolve reoccurring issues that continue to impact our quality of life. I want to continue, um, I want to improve systems to ensure that no one is doing the work alone behind closed doors or without voices mostly impacted in the room. And I want residents to have access and how to connect with resources and opportunity to get involved in shaping the future of this district. This is the real and necessary work, and I'm ready to do it for District Seven.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Marissa Luce. Next up, for your sixty seconds, we have Leon Rivera. Uh, go right ahead, uh, sixty seconds for your opening.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here. My name is Leon Rivera, uh, born and raised here in Roxbury. Uh, I first started my activism with the late Chuck Turner, who, uh, exposed me to local politics and why it was important to get involved. Uh, from a young age, I've been tackling quality of life issues from poor conditions at our schools to pedestrian safety, uh, one of the leading voices on the opioids crisis here in Boston. Uh, and I'm looking to be your next, uh, district city councillor because our district is in tough shape. And I think we need someone at City Hall that can, um, bring and take on those challenges. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Leon Rivera. I just want to remind the candidates, uh, this is, we're all going to be here. And we could shake our head and agree with one another on any of the issues, uh, that, that you find, uh, to be, uh, issues that, that are important. Um, you, regardless of whether you win, quote unquote, win or not, you will all still, uh, continue to be a part of this district. And any person in District Seven, in the District Seven City Council seat to be successful will need all of you in order to be successful. So, um, I come from a, a black church tradition. Um, you don't have to say amen or hallelujah, any of those things, but you can, uh, nod or a snap or, or clap. So I just wanted to toss that out. Uh, but next up for sixty seconds, we have Lorraine Wheeler.
Hi, uh, my name is Lorraine Payne Wheeler, and I, um, was born in Roxbury and raised here. And I continue to live here with my husband and my son. Um, I, for the last ten years, I have been organizing a neighborhood association in the Moreland Street Historic District. And during that ten years, we've really come across almost all of the issues that, um, affect, um, District Seven. And so I really feel as if I've been doing this work for a long time. Um, I, I have a, uh, civil rights arts project, um, that we convened a group of people and an artist, uh, designed it. We have a, um, we've been working with developers for a long period of time, whether that's been on affordable housing, market-grade housing. Um, and so, um, I welcome the opportunity to, um, talk more to District Seven, um, constituents this evening.
Thank you so much, uh, Mrs. Lorraine Payne Wheeler. So next up, we are, and, and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, organizers, uh, this next round of questions, uh, we have ninety seconds, uh, I believe.
Seconds.
What, what was that?
Sixty seconds.
Okay, okay.
And all short form answers, sixty seconds, because we want to cover territory.
Okay. Uh, thank you so much. They, they, they're, they go ahead and jerk my chain on that one. Um, I get, I can get a little wild when it comes to, uh, this piece. So, um, you have sixty seconds to answer, and these are going to be, um, questions about essential issues that are happening in and around, uh, the community. And, uh, because I get to do this, I will also spice it up and we'll break it up with, uh, some even shorter form kind of yes or no, uh, lightning round questions, uh, in, in between. So we're, we're going to keep it spicy. Um, and so we're going to go ahead and, uh, start with housing. And I will tell you as the former District Seven City Councillor, by the way, all of my hair was, was black when I first started this. I want to let you, let y'all know. Um, you know, you know, probably do want to put in your budget either just for women or just for men, whatever y'all use, go, go right ahead. But, um, this issue of housing is a critical issue. With the eviction moratorium set to expire at the end of the month, the state moratorium already expired and replaced by only partial protections. Boston, this question says, could face a surge in, in, in evictions? What we know is District Seven will face a surge of e- evictions in the coming months. So this, we're going to be very specific in terms of timeframes here. What's, what steps would you make in your first month as councillor to help protect residents facing the immediate threat of eviction? Uh, and understand, this is not hypothetical. You will face this. And in addition, uh, this is eviction or foreclosure. Um, and then also, how do you deal with small landlords who are facing the potential or of foreclosure because of potentially not getting, uh, the rent that they, they needed? Uh, and then also, you can broaden it, uh, in the first year, how would you address the growing issues of displacement and housing instability? Uh, so again, this is critically critical to what you're going to face every day, in a particular, probably on Fridays, knowing that folks, uh, oftentimes, uh, have, uh, court on Tuesday. Um, so, uh, we're going to go ahead and, uh, switch it up a little bit. We're going to start, um, this one with, uh, Dr. Brandy Brooks. Um, and, uh, we'll go, um, we'll, we'll spice it up a little bit in terms of the order. Uh, but, uh, Dr. Brooks, go right ahead.
Yes, thank you for the question. It's very, it's critical for our district. Just like we instituted a moratorium, and now it's going to expire at the state and the federal level, we need to work together now to reinstitute it. And so within that first month, that would be priority number one, is reinstituting that moratorium. The second thing that we need to do is review, are there spaces in the budget where there's discretionary spending that we can help landlords and we can help tenants with respect to covering rent and/or covering mortgage? Because those are critical pieces. We do not want to increase homelessness and housing instability greater than it already is within our district. So that is one month. Within the year, with respect to how do you deal with issues of growing housing instability? We need to look at AMI. We need to look at area median income, and we need to look at the inclusionary development policy, and we need to address those immediately.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Brooks. Uh, we're going to go with, uh, Joa Dipina.
Um, well, Brandy Brooks, uh, Dr. Brandy Brooks, uh, basically, those same steps I would take. Um, I would also look into the private sector and see what the private sector would be willing to help, um, in, in funding, uh, to help these landlords that are losing their homes, um, to the, these, uh, drastic losses of income because people haven't been paying rent. Um, but I also feel that we also need to look back at our residents and, and reach out with some kind of education, of financial education, because a lot of people are stuck on these issues because of lack of financial education. So that's, that would be another step that we'll take on later on after re-instituting these moratoriums. Um, and to ensure that our residents are educated around finances, because that'd be the biggest problem in our community is financial education.
Thank you so much, uh, Joa Dipina. Uh, next up, uh, Leon Rivera.
So I would add on to that, uh, we can definitely reinstate the, the moratorium, but also, we definitely, long-term, we want to look at the IDP. I think we should raise it from thirteen percent to at least forty percent. I think we should also make it easier for smaller developers to develop a hundred percent affordable housing. That would be long-term. Uh, I also think we should be looking into our linkage fees, uh, to use at least half of our linkage fees for low-income, uh, housing, for families that are making forty thousand dollars or less. Right now, what we're seeing that's being built, i- it's not affordable for many families here. So I would look at different avenues to tackle the housing crisis. It can't just be, uh, one solution. We have to tackle it from different angles. So that's, those are a few things that I would do. Uh, long-term as well, I, I would like to expand the Boston Plus, uh, Mortgage Program, which helps with the, uh,
Ten seconds.
And, uh, yup, I'll tell, no, that's it. I'll leave it there.
Thank you so much, Leon. Uh, we appreciate you. Uh, Angie Camacho.
Thank you so much. This is actually one of my loves. As you know, councillor Jackson, um, I was supportive, um, as a community partner, um, even during your administration on, um, on a number of these issues. I agree with a lot of what has been said. Um, I'm so proud to support, um, Representative Tyler's legislation on, um, focusing the AMI on locality pay. But one of the other things that, um, in regards to what Leon said, was in addition to using linkage fees, we need to expand workforce development. Because in most of our zip codes, except for one in District Seven, our residents are actually earning their highest income attainment later on in years, which means it's less money that they have for disposable income, building assets, and even surviving in their retirement. So we need to put more income into the hands of our residents to make sure that they can afford the current housing stock
Ten seconds.
right now, which only supports twenty-three percent, who can even own property in Boston with a six-figure income. We need to put more money in the hands of residents as well as expanding legislation to support them. Thank you.
Uh, Lorraine.
Uh, I think that, um, we need to look at, um, some of the federal money that has been allocated to Massachusetts and use some of those funds in order to stabilize, um, these families. And, um, as well as to help small, uh, landlords if they find that their tenants are not paying the rent. I agree with what Dr. Brandy Brooks said, um, in terms of, we can't make the community, uh, less stable. People need to, uh, be in their homes as opposed to becoming, um, homeless. And the last thing I would say is that in, um, district, in Roxbury, that, um, a, a, a large percent of the homes are, um, rental. And that we really need to look at ways that our, uh, community members can buy, um, uh, condominiums and, um, housing that's available. And, um, and so we've developed a lot of, um, affordable housing in our community that people would be able to purchase.
Yep. Next up, uh, Mrs. Marissa Luce. Thank you so much, uh, Mrs., Mrs. Lorraine Wheeler. Marissa Luce.
Thank you so much. So, uh, everyone has really highlighted a lot of the, um, ideas, uh, that I would implement as well. I think one other thing is also in terms of the organizations that are serving, um, families in the city of Boston is really ensuring that, um, those organizations also have the resources to support families who are in high housing crises as well. Um, I think that that is critically important so that that is, and, you know, an additional support that, um, families can access in addition to while they are, um, accessing these, while they are able to benefit from the, um, extension, uh, as well. I think that we also need to look at innovative, more innovative housing models as well, looking at community land trust.
Ten seconds.
And, um, uh, now leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Marissa Luce. Uh, next up, we'll have, uh, Tanya Fernandez Anderson.
As someone who has experienced homelessness, I really understand the impact that skyrocketing rents has on residents, right? So I think that I, I agree with my colleagues. I think you all have wonderful ideas, and I would definitely be open to pushing policies to fight for those. I think that we also, if you, look, if you work forty hours in, um, the city and, or in this district, and you're paying more than thirty-five, um, percent of your rent, the city should subsidize a difference. Like usually, we should not have to, um, not be able to live quality of lives if we are working forty hours a week trying to take care of our families. The most important thing is looking at all of these ideas and, um, executing them to make sure that they're equitable for everyone.
Okay. Well, thank, uh, thank everyone, uh, for their responses around this issue of housing. Again, uh, I heard the word critically, the two words critically important. Um, you will face, uh, a great number of calls, uh, on this, uh, particular, uh, issue. Again, thank, uh, everyone for that question. Um, one of the other areas that, um, I was very hands-on in, um, and continue to be is this issue of public safety. And, um, District Seven is very diverse. Um, and so some of the, uh, issues that you'll face in some parts of your district, kind of quality of life, um, issues. Um, but then I will note to you, you will be at crime scenes. Uh, and you will need to be, uh, there to, uh, to console families, but also, uh, push policy. And so the question, uh, that we have is around, uh, public safety. We're in a moment where the systemic issues of overpolicing in our communities, uh, abound and are, are getting, uh, long overdue attention from the media, policymakers, and the public, finally. Um, won't go there too much. Uh, what should Boston do? And what would you advocate as a councillor to reimagine public safety? To both address the issues of systemic racism, but also, you're in District Seven. So many of the folks that you're going to be dealing with are victims of crime one day, and the next day, some of them are perpetrators, right? So you're, you're going to be faced with, uh, dealing, uh, with both. But how do you deal with systemic racism as well as reducing crime and gun violence? And also deal with the other quality of life issues, um, that you're going to hear about? And I know this is broadening the question, but around, you know, hear stuff about fireworks. Um, you hear a lot about, uh, motorcycles and bicycles and, and alike. It's a lot there. So how do you balance those, uh, uh, the, the, the issues of public safety on one side, uh, in terms of, of the violent crime that's occurring? But also, how do you, uh, deal with it from the perspective of not only, uh, having police, uh, be the ones that are called for everything and overpolicing and potentially targeting individuals, uh, in, in our community? And so we're gonna, uh, we are going to start with, uh, Angelina, uh, Camacho. Uh, Ms. Angie Camacho.
Thank you. Again, this is something that I'm actively working on. Um, one of the things that I'm proud to support is, um, again, in regards to workforce development, pre-academy training for culturally appropriate um, individuals to join our public safety workforce. Um, again, not only does it provide essential union jobs that pay pensions, Again, not only does it provide essential union jobs that pay pensions, that puts essential income into the hands of folks, but it's going to take us reflective employees to change the system and start breaking it up from the inside. Another thing that I've been working on, I've developed not one, but two youth opportunity programs. One at Washington Heights and the other one at ABCD, Youth Engaged in Action, to help put opportunity around financial literacy and civic engagement and positive community outreach for our young people so that they have an opportunity through guaranteed employment going forward to get our young people off the streets. And then as it relates to racism and oppression, we have to be unapologetic in the city and every department about the fact that it exists. It needs to be broken and we need to take action.
Thank you, Angie Camacho. Next up, why don't we bring in Marissa Luz? This is your shot at this question around public safety.
Thank you so much. First, I I would say that in terms of the systemic racism, we have to really work on really acknowledging in the city of Boston that there is a racism issue, that we need to address that issue across all departments within the city of Boston, that we need to address that also in our neighborhoods and even within our own homes. There is a, we need to really decolonize our minds and understand what that means. We all have work to do. As a survivor of homicide victim, I know personally, I have experienced personally what the impacts of violence can have on our family and our community. And it's very important that we really look at this issue collectively and understand that there needs to be better trauma response approaches in place so that we can provide not only the families the supports that they need, but also the community. Because every time that there's a homicide in the city of Boston, understand that has a long-term effect on all the
Okay. Thank, thank you so much. If we can have the the ten-second reminder, I didn't hear it. So also, let's, let's go ahead on to Leon Rivera on this issue of a public, public safety.
So I would definitely agree that we need more training for our police officers. But we also need to recruit more officers from our communities that look like us and that actually have similar backgrounds in us. Because sometimes folks might look like us, but you know, there's still a huge disconnect there. So we need to build strong relationships with folks and and get people from our communities to, am I on mute?
No, I'm sorry. Just said bless you. Sorry about that.
No, all right. And yeah, and on top of that, I mean, I find absurd that we continue to increase the BPD budget, yet we have the highest unsolved murder rates in our community. So I would definitely look into reallocating funds, not defunding, but reallocating funds. So for example, we have more mental health workers and outreach workers. I'll give you an example on Mass Ave, you know, Mass and Cass right now. If you go down there, you'll see about six or eight cruisers sitting in their cars while people are injecting themselves, overdosing on our sidewalks. I think there's space there for us to be able to allocate some of those funds to mental health work and outreach and also funds of violence prevention groups in our community that are doing great work that we know that's, those are a few things that I would work on.
Thank you very much, Leon Rivera. Next up, why don't we have Tanya Fernandez Anderson?
Hi, I just wanted to extend some positive energy to my sister Marissa. As someone who's experienced being killed in front of me and a mother of black sons, I always say the hardest thing to do is to be a black woman or a black person in America or to raise black children. And this issue deeply impacts all of us in a very emotional one, right? So excuse me a moment. I had no idea this was, I was gonna get emotional, but I think that not only increasing diversity in the police department, but we also have to address their mental illness and how they're self-medicating and the issues that go with that, right? We also have to look into economic integration as the crux of the issues that we face in our society. We have to look at mental health as a holistic experience so that we can support these treatments, not only in the schools, but social workers, triage and calls and other ideas, but making sure that it's a holistic approach so that there's a homeschool connection as well as security for a way of life and all, all families are feeling secure and safe. They can be ready for doing.
Thank you. The one thing I I will note, it's okay to get emotional. We should be getting emotional because anytime we lose somebody in our community, we lose part of our collective future. So I, it, that's, that's okay for for that to occur. I'm going to go to Lorraine Payne Wheeler.
So I'm going to join Marissa and Tanya and say that when I was a teenager, someone killed my father and my grandfather. And that happened in my father's home, as a matter of fact. And the person was arrested right away. The person was tried. I think sometimes people think that they get closure as a result of that, but the pain of those, it doesn't go away, really ever. And so I think that informed some of my decision to attend law school. And in regard to something that Tito Jackson was saying, just like a week ago, we had a Zoom call with another neighborhood association. And we were talking about an issue that was really in their neighborhood. But we're talking about a neighborhood that's just one street over. And the person said, "It sounds like your neighborhood is a lot different from ours," even though it's one straight difference.
Thank you so much. And I, and I do want to thank everyone for sharing their their personal experience. That that is a really important thing. And condolences to to everyone. And we're going to continue to work together to make sure that we make our community better. Next up, we're gonna have Joa de Pena.
Hi, Tito. Tito, you know, because you've experienced this with me, my brother was murdered. And you are one of the people that came there to support my family. So in between that, I've lost several people. And that's where my heart is in this community is the gun violence and these families that I deal with trauma every day. I've been out in the front lines of this issue here because ever since I watched someone get away with killing Malik Andrade Percival, it's been really hard for me. And I took that and that propelled me to do the work that I do around trauma. I help a lot of families behind the scenes that people don't know what I do because I'm not one of those people that help families and need to publicize it. But over the years, since Malik Andrade Percival was murdered, I've been doing the work and I will continue to do the work and I will continue to highlight the systemic racism in the police department and ensure that we are better in our community.
Thank you so much, Joa de Pena. And next up, Dr. Brandy Brooks.
First, I just want to, before I begin my answer, start with thanking everyone for sharing their experiences, sending you love and light because it's real and that stays with us when we lose someone. We get to moments where we can somewhat smile when we think of them, but I definitely want to say that just to start. And secondly, with respect to public safety, here's where the rubber meets the road. What we spend our money on tells you a lot about our values. And one thing we know, looking at the city budget, we spend close to ninety million dollars on police overtime. Ninety million dollars. And so one thing we have to do with respect to public safety is understand that a gun, a badge, and a cruiser does not equal safety for some communities. In some communities, it equals distrust, discrimination, and violence. And so what I'd wanted to is make sure that the Office of Accountability and Transparency is not just a rubber stamp. It's not just a data mining. It has funding and it has power and teeth. And diversify our police force. Make it look like us and represent us.
Thank you so much, Dr. Brandy Brooks. And I will attest, and again, thank you again for everyone sharing. Last November, my home was actually shot at and there was a bullet hole still there. So your honorable be, before your name, does not actually change the reality that something can happen. And again, thank each of you for the work that you are doing and propose to do. The next up, we are going to talk about public health. We know we have one of the most diverse districts in terms of disparities in public health. I often note that one end of the district, so you guys have a little, a little teeny bit of the back bay, right? So you get a little, just a, just a little right over there, like, so West, West Newton, St. Batov, just a little, right? And but then, so the average or the, the, the average age that people pass away over in that area is ninety-one point nine. There are census tracts in Roxbury where folk on average pass away at fifty-eight point nine. A thirty-three-year difference in in life expectancy between really a two-mile radius. So there is a lot going on. And by the way, fifty-eight point nine is lower than the life expectancy of Iraq and Cambodia. So that's a reality. But when it comes to this issue of of public health, and I know many of you have touched on this and many of you have done work in this area, but I want to ask you the question. The mayor's task force on Mass and Cass, and there's been several of these task force, task forces, has been a meeting for two years and discussed or proposed several initiatives such as mobile bathrooms to address the critical sanitation issues on our streets and alleyways and also people's doorsteps and their stoops. And make permanent home delivery of methadone. Interestingly, methadone is one of the only medications that you actually don't go to CVS and get. You get dosed methadone on a daily basis. And in our district, there are four methadone clinics within a ten-block radius. And among, among other initiatives, but none of these have gone from proposal to implementation, right? So there's a lot of talk that's happening. How will you ensure that the city takes immediate action to address the situation at Mass and Cass while working on the deeper rooted issues of mental health, substance abuse, homelessness, poverty that have actually really the roots of that that give rise to the reality that we as a community, as a city, and in in particular, as our district is is actually facing. So we're gonna start, we'll keep, keep mixing it up. We are going to start with Leon Rivera.
So this is something that I've been working on for the last maybe five, six years, picking up needles at our local parks, at Orchard Gardens, something that we definitely need. We need to decentralize services. We have too much going on in the South End and Lower Roxbury. If you go down to Atkinson Street right now, you will find over a hundred people passed on the sidewalk. There's trash, there's feces, there's urine. So we definitely need to decentral, decentralize services. We need more outreach efforts out in the area. Right now, after six o'clock, everything is closed. Folks are out on the streets trying to find, you know, somewhere to sleep behind your backyard, our schools. So I would like to see twenty-four-hour outreach efforts. We need to decentralize services. I've sat down with many elected officials, including state officials, and it seems like everyone is breaking silos. So I would look to to create a regional strategy to be able to decentralize services and provide we can't do much if we don't provide supportive housing. We have literally over two
Thank you so much, Leon Rivera. Next up, why don't we go to Dr. Brandy Brooks?
Sure. Thank you. This is a critical issue for our community and it requires a public health response because it's not just substance use and abuse. It's homelessness. It's poverty. It's mental health. And so just with respect to things we should do. Number one is it is going to require not just the district approach, but a city and a state approach. Because fifteen hundred people come to Lower Roxbury and that area every day that are from other regions and other areas. So if we're going to talk about decentralization of services, we need to talk about, well, what other community is going to say, yes, this location can be in my community. So it's going to take collaboration to get that. That's number one. Number two is it will still require some public safety response just with respect to some of the fights, the stabbings and and drug use and, you know, activity that has gone on. So it will require some public safety response. And then number three is the bridge may be closed, but as far as I understand, the island is still open. So we need to retrofit and update the buildings and shuttle folks to the island.
Thank you so much, Dr. Brandy Brooks. Next up, why don't we have Lorraine Payne Wheeler?
So I agree that the island really was the best approach because one of the problems near Boston Medical Center, it's just, it's not just people with substance use disorder. It's people that are selling them drugs and really exploiting them. I live within a mile of the area. We would like to think of that as the entrance to our community, Roxbury. It certainly has had a big impact on the public school that is there. So we really need to think about how we can spread those services to other communities. You've probably read that there was a hospital in Middleborough that two years ago dumped a woman at Pine Street Inn and she died a few hours later. So we really have to look at suburban communities and get them to offer services in their communities as well.
Angelina Camacho, Angie Camacho.
Thank you. Again, another thing that I'm working on, right? Along with Leon and the great work that's happening, but from different angles, right? I actually work on focusing on how our health workers can go out and actually be ready to deal with this crisis. The actual presidential recovery plan speaks to increasing the number of people who are on the street ready to respond. I can't say much more about that for a number of reasons. But they're also, I've worked with HomeStar and a number of other groups around how issues related to the evictions, et cetera, could actually increase this problem. And I was even one of the ones who was impacted by the problem because I was actually on the news for, because somebody actually broke into my car just for a place to sleep and eat because they are dealing with this crisis. And so thank you. So basically, I think we need to take a no excuses approach. Like Dr. Brandy Brooks said, that island is open. If we got to get people on a boat, if we got to work with different people like Leon to make sure we keep fighting from all the
Thank you so much, Angie Camacho. Marissa Luz, the issue of public health and a particular methadone. I'm sorry, and I should, I should not call it that. The area of Mass and Cass.
Just acknowledge those, those activists who've been working on this issue. Yahira Lopez, also Domingos, who's been working on this as well as Leon. And in earlier on, I definitely had been supporting that effort and engage more of the Roxbury, Lower Roxbury, around that, that issue as well, because it really is going to take a collaborative approach in terms of residents really, you know, voicing their, their concerns and advocating. However, it doesn't end there. This issue of Mass and Cass, this is, this, you know, it has become a city issue. And for me, I'm very confused by the fact that there are so many that are coming from so many other places is putting such a, such pressure on the city of Boston. And I think that we need to look at that issue as well, in addition to how it's impacting the quality of
Thank you so much. And and next up, Tanya Fernandez Anderson.
So I think, you know, we've, we've seen pandemics, that we've seen issues like this before and we know the best practices and we have examples, right? So you look at the study with Lisbon, Portugal, they've already curbed their addiction problem by sixty percent within one year, just two thousand twenty. So we know what to do and we know that we should collaborate, city, government, and disperse these clinics as well as coupling them with housing services that creates that wraparound services, that creates that holistic mental health services. Dual diagnosis clients are at higher risk with homelessness. So we understand the services that they need. I think the difference, right? What is the difference? Skin color. We have to address this issue. It's been far too prolonged. We need to have a very aggressive but a very logical approach. We need to have a very aggressive, but a very logical approach, very practical approach on how to handle this, handle this situation. If we have seen gunshot wounded patients outside bleeding, we would not treat it this way. We would find beds, we would find rooms, we would find resources and we'll take care of it.
Thank you so much to all of the candidates for addressing this issue of public health. I just want to make two clarifications of things that actually get kind of screwed up is, one, I want to acknowledge Yahira, and you are absolutely right. There are five methadone clinics, not four. There used to be a city run methadone clinic by where your car gets towed, Frontage Road. That was closed and an additional clinic was opened next to, to Mass and Cast. And also I just want to be very clear that the island that you're discussing, Long Island, that bridge was always Boston's bridge. And the decision to close that bridge was solely on the city of Boston. So there, there has been a lot of misinformation. I just want to be very clear. And you folks as aspiring city officials, we need to own the fact that it was the, the city of Boston, the prior mayor who made that decision. And I just want to be very clear about that issue. We're gonna switch it up a little bit. We've had some really great, well, Joe, Joe, we're gonna have to actually stick with the format.
But you skipped me.
Oh, I am, you know what? I am, I apologize. And, and Joe, I, I have never skipped, never skipped you before. And you do stand out. So let me, let me go to you. And I really, really apologize for, for skipping you. Yes, sir.
Well, I, let me address that issue. That issue is there to me. Me and Domingos and Leon, way before a lot of people jumped in this, we had been working on this issue for a long time. Going to community meetings and going at Mayor Walsh for these issues. I believe, like Brandy said, we need to get the boat and put them on the boat, like Noah's Ark, and go right over to, to the island. And we also need to really look at what we're doing. We're talking about allowing injection centers and all these things. I'm not for any of that. I'm not here to support anyone injecting anything that's physically harming them. I want to get them help. I want to ensure that there's wraparound services. I want to ensure that there's a building, what I feel the city should take the building and turn it into a rehab and have beds for these people. There's no bed for them. So that's what we need to work on. I'm not about support, about supporting injection centers at all.
Hey, thank you so much. And again, Joe, Joe DePina, thank you. And also I apologize for skipping you. I would never, never.
It's okay, Tino.
Charger to, to my, to my relatives, as well as some of these grays up here, Joe. So you know what? We're gonna, we're gonna do a couple of lightning round questions. So these are going to be short, short form, yes, no, potentially a couple of different, different components. And so we're going, bang, bang, bang. We're going, we're going, we're going to roll through these and, and have, have some fun. So these are again, short, to the point. And the, the timer won't be there. I, I will be there. And if you go, you go too long, brother will cut you off. Again, charge it to, charge it to, to moving this forward and not my heart. So this issue of public schools and the school committee. So we're gonna get three choices here. So there are, Boston, out of the three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns in the state of Massachusetts, there is only one with a school committee that is fully appointed. I'm not going to have you guess which one that is. I'm going to tell you that it is the city of Boston. And so with that said, my question to all of you, future District Seven City Councilors, is appointed, fully appointed by the mayor, hybrid model, an appointment by the, the mayor as well as some folks who are elected, or a fully elected school committee? Those are your three choices. And again, appointed, hybrid, or fully elected school committee? And we are going to start with Marissa.
I'm elected.
Elected for Ms. Marissa Luce. Next up, Dr. Brandy Brooks.
One hundred percent emphatically elected.
If you had any question, Dr. Brandy Brooks says elected. Tanya Fernandez Anderson.
Elected.
Tanya says elected. Joe DePina.
Hybrid.
Joe DePina says hybrid. And Angie Camacho.
Appointed, but will support hybrid.
Appointed, but will support hybrid. Next, Leon Rivera.
So fully elected with a stipend for the youth vote. And I also think we should have more than one young person on the school committee.
Thank you. Leon, fully, fully elected, stipend for the youth vote and more than one young person. And Lorraine Payne Willer.
Hybrid.
Hybrid. Okay. So we have a multiplicity of opinions about this issue. And again, you'll have an opportunity to, to get a longer form from folks as, as we move forward. Let's go with yet another education question, and then we're going to come back and get deep, deep with the education. So there was something, today's Thursday, there are meetings that happen on Wednesdays. And that's a school committee meeting at the Bruce Bowling Building, right in Dudley Square, and it probably was, was online. But what we would like to know is your thoughts. Was the school committee's decision last night for a hundred percent versus the eighty percent proposal? Was that the right decision? And, and for folks who don't know about this, this is actually the, the decision based on how young people will matriculate to one of our three exam schools in the city of Boston. This has been hotly debated. And there were kind of two platforms around one hundred percent of the feeders coming based on position and, and poverty rate versus simply another component, which was around twenty percent, kind of pure test. And so can get a little bit complicated, but I know all of you have been paying attention to this. So did the school committee make the right decision last night? Angie Camacho.
Um, I only say yes because I wish the set aside option came up earlier in the community conversation process so that we could come up with the right number of set aside. If the community wanted to go for it, they should have a chance to talk about it.
Thank you. Next up, Joe DePina.
I said no. And because I feel like we, the exam school issue is a big issue. And I just don't think, I don't know.
Okay. No for, for Joe. Next up, Lorraine Payne Wheeler.
I think, yes, it was the right decision, but I also think that it should be monitored going forward. Because I think a lot of times decisions are made and there really isn't a lot of evaluation as to how it impacts people after the fact. So I, I, I am, I support the decision, but I would hope that there would be a group of people monitoring that.
So support, but monitor. Tanya Fernandez Anderson?
Uh, no, absolutely not. I graduated from an exam school. I saw, I saw the inequalities. I saw the inequities. So, no.
Leon Rivera?
Just to clarify, we're, we're, we're saying yes or no to the current proposal that was the, the, the original recommendation that we just passed, correct?
Exactly, Leon.
I, I definitely agree. I think we did the right thing at the moment. And I also encourage BPS parents to continue to advocate. So we don't have to fight for three good schools, but we can make all of our schools great. I think, that's like the larger conversation, but I definitely agree that it was the right decision to make at the moment.
Thank you so much, Leon Rivera. Dr. Brandy Brooks? And, and, and by the way, can we have everyone other than the candidates mute themselves? This is very important. We don't get an opportunity to have this amazing group of some of our, 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 our best representatives here all at one time. So if we could make sure that we are respectful and go ahead and mute yourselves other than the candidates and my timekeeper. Dr. Brooks?
Um, so yes, I agree with, you know, their new proposal, grades counting for seventy percent, standardized test count of thirty, and then from there looking at socioeconomic factors. But I will say this, I wish we would have the same energy, the same support and the same emails and outreach for all the other schools in the district that we had for this exam school debate. I, as a candidate, received no less than two hundred emails. Can we have the same energy, the same funding, the same justice for all the schools in our district?
Thank you so much. Did I get everybody?
Not me.
I'm sorry about that. Marissa?
No problem. Um, there's, there's, I, I think, again, I agree, yes, this was the right decision for now. However, there's a lot of work to be done. I also went to an exam school and like Tanya, experienced a lot of discrimination as well. And there were issues then in, in regards to what to do about enrollment as they are now. However, I think these are some steps moving in the right direction, but there's more work to be done.
Okay. And on, on that note, we're going to get back. I'm going to do a better job. So the next lightning round, we're going to have shorter lightning. Okay. So we're going to go, we're going to go with lightning that's a little bit shorter than the lightning that we just had. But that, that was, that was a very important question. We're gonna, let's, let's dig in to this issue of public schools. We know that fully one third of the budget in the city of Boston is there to fund the now nearly six, sixty thousand young people over the about a hundred and twenty-five school buildings, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-six school buildings. Obviously, there are proposals for closures. But this is one of the most unique times that anyone has ever lived and our young people have ever faced with this global pandemic. And for young people to not physically be in, in that space. And then also, you know, this is also compounded by the, the way in which many of the folks in District Seven are required to live based on our economic, economic status and our housing options that, that are oftentimes pretty difficult. So let's, let's jump into this question. Boston Public School students have faced a chaotic and traumatic year. And, and that's based on the COVID nineteen pandemic. How can Boston Public Schools ensure that the issue of trauma and mental health needs of our students as well as the inequality that has been exacerbated over the past year? We know that there's something called summer learning loss, which is typically when you're a poor child and you take those two months off in the summertime, you actually lose more than those two months in schooling when, when you get back. We know that to be the case. They were off for, out for much longer than two and a half months. Are these issues being adequately addressed when the students return in the fall? And so, again, how can the Boston Public Schools ensure that trauma and mental health needs of students as well as the inequality exacerbated by this past year are adequately addressed when the students return in the fall? We are going to start this one with the Rain Payne Wheeler.
Well, I, I think that we should have more support for students' mental health needs in public schools anyway. And in terms of the learning experience, I'm on the board of the Boys and Girls Club in Roxbury. And one of the programs there, they had students that would work in a pod with a learning, with a learning assistant. And so those young people were able to attend school online, but to do it with other people and with other programs and with services. So I think a lot of young people were able to learn in that way and to be successful in that way. And, and I think we need more programs like that. I think we need summer learning academies. You know, to address the learning loss that might have taken place.
Thank you, Lorraine Payne Wheeler. Next up, we're going to have Leon Rivera.
So I would say we, we still have a lot of work to do. We are currently receiving, I believe, around four hundred million dollars in federal funds for our schools. And yet our schools still lack HVAC systems, proper heating, access to clean water. I think we definitely need to do better at getting students' support for parents, support for students with IEPs, high need students. Right now, I was just working at a learning pod myself, and you can see the disparities where children who were getting, you know, certain services throughout the pandemic, tho- though, everything was eliminated. So we've left those students behind. So I think that we can definitely take this moment and we have the funds available. We just need the action at City Hall to be able to fill in those gaps. And I'm huge on, you know, fixing our, our, our school buildings and making sure that our parents feel, we need to create environments for our parents to feel heard and welcome so they can actually participate in their child's education. So those are a lot of things we need to.
Thank you, Leon Rivera. Next up, Marissa Luce.
Thank you. I also, I also agree, we have a lot of work to do in terms of providing support for our students, but in also support for their families. We need to have licensed therapists with cultural competence that have cultural competency training. We need to improve the conditions of our schools, making sure that our schools are properly retrofitted for, so that there is, we're creating an environment for healthy learning. And, and also so that there's also resource supports to help to create a, a better learning environment for, for all.
Joe DePina, thank you so much, Marissa Luce. And, and I, it looks like we, we lost Angie Camacho. Hopefully, we can get her back on. Joe DePina? Joe, you, you are still on mute.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. This is a big issue for me because I, I feel like our students have lost significant amount of education in the past year. And we need to figure out how to get, get them caught up again. And at the same time, as services in our schools, also often when you go on the other side of Mass Pike, if anything happens traumatic in, in their community, there's wraparound services, there's therapists, there's psychiatrists and all these things. So I feel like in September, we really need to focus that all these schools have these services, at least for the next year or two, to deal with these students coming back to school and deal with all the trauma that they dealt with during COVID. Some, some kids witnessed domestic violence and other things during that time. And school is where they're, they're safe.
Thank you.
So I think we need to know we have services.
Thank you so much, Joe DePina. Next up, Tanya Fernandez Anderson.
You know, as a foster parent or intensive care foster parent, I deal with a lot of, or advocated for a lot of students with mental health issues, as well as different, you know, ways of doing things. And so I think that we need to actually empower the parents. The homeschool connection is extremely important, right? So like we give kids diagnosis, but then the parents may not or may be able to support their children in a holistic way at home. So familial, familial support are extremely important. We cannot provide such services and say, okay, well, here it is. It's in a school, all set. It's a Western approach, a Western medicine approach, and we should think about more of a preventative measure. So mental health services in the schools coupled with wraparound services, but empowering families to actually understand treatment, diagnosis, crisis de-escalation, right? So that if we are going into learning and homework spaces, looking into how is my child doing progress, monitoring behavior, behavior modification charts, whatever it has to do, a package that goes home. You sit down with a social worker and you teach this parent how to advocate properly for their child and support all of these treatment.
Dr. Brandy Brooks? Tanya Fernandez Anderson, thank you so much for, for that answer. And Dr. Brandy Brooks?
So we need to create an ecosystem. You know, we're getting four hundred million dollars. First and foremost, we need to make sure the built environments in which young people learn have HVAC, have heating, have air conditioning. That's number one. Number two is this last fourteen months has been traumatic, not just for the students, but for parents, for faculty, for staff and administrators. So we need to make sure that we have mental health supports within the school system. Just today, it was released that BLA will have two mental wellness support blocks per week built into their schedule. It was advocated by the students because they said, we're coming back and we need that. We need to make sure we have supports. And so we need to make sure the built environments, we need to make sure mental health supports are there. And then long-term, we also need to make sure that our educators, our staff, our faculty reflect the students in the building. So we need to invest in teacher education and certification programs in communities of color.
Thank you so much. Did I get everyone that round?
No.
Okay.
I was cut off.
Okay. I just wanted to make, make sure. I just wanted to make.
Now you know, now you know, education and family empowerment is my thing. So you know, you can't let me out of this.
Right ahead, Ms. Anthony Camacho.
There we go. So again, youth programming around family self-sufficiency and, and making sure that the summer is the summer of youth is critical. The program, one of the programs that I developed, even though it was around financial literacy and civic engagement, it helped kids learn and really focus on literacy and math and a number of things that they didn't even know they were retaining during the summer learning loss time that really is so critical for ASOS programming. The other thing, I agree, more mental health clinicians, more nurses, full-time, not part-time, not split between different, different schools. The O'Brien also this year, my son is at the O'Brien advocated for more advocacy blocks as well, where they have more one-on-one time with the teachers. I helped to draft a letter for parents to actually sign on and support with that with parents. And I also was one of, we also need parent voice. As one of the leaders who helped to reinvigorate the citywide parent council, I am a staunch supporter of making sure that parents understand and also on the ELL Task Force.
Okay. Thank you so much, Angie Camacho. We are rounding the bin, ladies and gentlemen. I'm, I'm going to take some creative license here and we're going to, we're going to hit this last question. And then we're, we are going to get through some, some of these short, short, short lightning. So let y'all, again, lightning is very, pow, right? Just bang, cool. And so last question, this issue of environmental justice. So a lot of times when folks say environmentalism, we're like, nah, that's not us. That's some, you know, kumbaya stuff in, in the corner. What we know is when there's flooding, when nationally a tornado hits, it always disproportionately affects folk who, who look like us. We are obviously in, in a coastal city. There's a lot of stuff going on here, but Black and Latinx children in Boston fates must much higher rates of asthma. We know that Roxbury has at least six times the asthma rate of white children with air pollution and one of the, one, air pollution being one of the major drivers. We know that, I, I want to make sure I'm, I'm right. Nubian Square, I had, I got, I got to reprogram because when I, when I was there, I thought, cool, this is Nubian Square is a, a place where there's about thirty-five thousand rides that originate from that area on a daily basis. The largest bus terminal in New England. How will you as a counselor address these environmental and issues, but actually in particular environmental injustice and ensure that everyone has clean air? That should not be a privilege. It should be a right in the city of Boston and in particular in District Seven. So this issue of addressing environmental justice and ensuring that everyone has access to clean air. Tanya, why don't we start with you? Actually, I'm sorry. Do we, is there anyone who didn't go first yet? Is anyone? Okay. You know what? Joa. Since, since I messed up earlier.
First all the time, but you know. Well, um, you know, our environment, we, we really need to focus on it. Just if you look at the seaport, the seaport water rising. And there's a lot of environmental issues and I, I would work with our, with our environmental specialists to ensure that District Seven is, is, has trees and is being cleaned up. Like right now, some parts of the district, we only get one day trash pickup. And I also would work on some of these emissions that are going into the air in our district and working with those companies and ensuring that they, they are doing the proper procedures to ensure that we have the clean air in District Seven. But I think it takes a lot to do with working with the environmental specialist and our mayor and the mayor to make sure that those things are done. And also I want to remind everybody, there's thirteen people at that table that we have to work with.
Thank you so much, Joa De Pina. Next up, let's go to Dr. Brandy Brooks.
Thank you for the question. I know you said, we don't do this, but I actually, as an intern, spent summers interning with the Student Conservation Association. And so I spent time at national parks doing, you know, sixteen mile hikes and other stuff. But when we talk about the environment, one of the things we have to get really critical about is our automobile usage. And we have to have conversations around how do we divert from automobile usage? One of those is making sure that public transit is equitable, public transit arrives on time and public transit is easily accessible. And so with that, we need to make sure that we invest in cleaning up our public transit system and making sure it doesn't emit as much carbon. And in addition to that, making sure we continue to have public open park spaces and green spaces because they help with respect to heat and they help with respect to cleaning up the air. So we need to fight for our public spaces and our parks and clean up our trains.
Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Brandy Brooks. Let's head to Tanya Fernandez Anderson on this issue of the environment.
I agree with my colleagues and I think that carbon emission or reducing carbon emission is really to look at car shares and, you know, rent a bike, more accessible transportation, making transit free, but also place making, right? So looking at densely populated areas, yes, trees, but looking at empty lots, working with D and D, looking at ways to create farm spaces. Something that I've actually had to partake and collaborated with Farmers Collaborative and actually created farm space, co-working space, more safe sites that where we can go and actually practice more recycling as well as more equitable developments that also is sustainable for the environment.
Thank you so much, Tanya Fernandez Anderson. Let's go to Leon Rivera.
So I'll say, you know, our environment concerns also interconnect with, with public health. We spoke about earlier about, and I think we need to do this from multiple angles. We have over thirty vacant city lots on Blue Hill Ave, which we can be using to create community gardens so we can increase access to healthy foods. We also have the funds, I believe, I'm, I'm looking at the budget, to be able to help small buildings retrofit their buildings so they can be more green. Those are a few things that we can work on, but more, I believe it was last year, we had to fight to save over two hundred trees on Melania Cass. So we're constantly being attacked from all angles. So I think we need to protect our trees, create more green spaces and make it easier and accessible for transportation for folks. And then also just in general, you know, I, I know that, I forgot what it was. It was about eliminating the, the cement and creating more green spaces as well. I know there was a criticize on that, but it shows that, you know, when we have so much cement and asphalt.
Thank you so much. Lorraine Payne Wheeler? Lorraine, you're, you're on, you're on mute.
Here I am. One of the most successful campaigns of the last couple of years that I was involved with was saving Melania's trees. And that group of people, Friends of Melania Cass, I mean, they had been fighting that for ten years. And I think we need to do more of that. You can look at some locations in District Seven, particularly around North Fork Avenue. You can actually see on heat maps that those are places where very true, very few trees have been planted. So I, I really think that we need to work with the city and we need to start some of the development that completely clears a lot and leaves very little space for trees and green space.
Angie Camacho?
Okay, thank you. And as one of the leaders of Ward Nine, I just want to highlight that a number of our members actually supported the tree effort. And when we're talking about the ten years of Melina Cass, we also need to highlight that it's actually a thirty-year issue because this all came up when we talked about the Southwest Corridor, if any of the longstanding leaders remember that, right? And so this was an extension of that arguably. So we can't, we can't leave any stone unturned. Actually, Joa, Jose Lopez, myself and a number of folks were on with Chief Hammond, talking about fighting for natural, natural grass in the redevelopment of the Malcolm X Park just yesterday. So we can't leave any stone unturned to have natural options or collective options. I would love to start an urban version of four H as one of the candidates who signed the Green New Deal pledge. I think that the carbon neutral goal of twenty thirty is way too late. We need to do everything we can do now to connect a number of our problems to the environmental issues that we know exist. Because we're, Nubian Square is one of the heat map areas.
Thank you so much, Angie Camacho. Marissa Luce rounding us out.
Oh, so communities of color, low income and working class families and immigrant communities are the most impacted by environmental hazards and face exposure to pollution, urban heat, the urban heat island effect, flooding and other impacts of climate change. So we need more green spaces, trees, treat cleaner air, open green spaces, tree-filled gathering spaces, urban gardens and safe parks and playgrounds, including with community input, I will say, on looking at idling laws, dedicated bike lanes, city buildings going green and better ramps and infrastructure.
Thank you so much, Marissa Luce. So I want to give, give you guys and ladies props. You brothers and sisters did a wonderful job in these long-form answers. We're going to bang through and as I noted before, we might have to just call this the thunder and not the lightning because lightning you kind of sometimes see a lot, but this is the bang, th- thunder. I am, I just want to let you know, I'm honored to be in the presence of greatness. You are doing an amazing job. And I will let you know, you all have done way better than I did in my first debate ever when I was trying to read off of a piece of paper that I had written, actually had printed out in eight-point font. So you have successfully eclipsed all that I have, have done when I, in, in my first debate. The only good thing that I did was I wore a black suit so people could not see the sweat that went through. Yeah. So we won't go there, but we're going to bang. So these are yes, no, or, or, or one of the other answers that, that are there. So taking police out of schools, yes or no? Tanya Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Brandy Brooks?
Yes.
Joa De Pina?
Yes.
Marissa Luce?
Yes.
Leon Rivera?
Yes.
Lorraine Payne Wheeler?
No, but they have to be retrained.
Angie Camacho?
I was stuck with these lightning questions. I know we have, I, I believe with Lorraine training, but otherwise it'd be yes.
Okay. An engagement issue. Thoughts on non-citizens voting? Yes or no? So non-citizens, those individuals who are, who have a green card here or those who, who are undocumented, having the right to vote? Yes or, or no? Angie Camacho?
That's no until we get the federal protections needed to protect my immigrant people.
Okay. Lorraine Payne Wheeler?
No.
Leon Rivera?
Yes.
Marissa Luce?
Yes.
Joa De Pina?
No.
Dr. Brandy Brooks?
No, without protections.
Tanya Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Sixteen and seventeen-year-olds having the right to vote. Marissa Luce?
Yes.
Joa De Pina?
Yes.
Tanya Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Brandy Brooks?
Yes.
Angie Camacho?
All day, yes. Let them lead.
Okay, okay. Well, again, thunder, lightning, Lorraine, Lorraine Payne Wheeler.
Yes.
Okay. What should this, this is, this is a numeric one. What should the city's targets for minority business enterprise contracts be? We, we know that right now it is less than two percent. What should the target be? Let's start with Leon Rivera.
Forty percent.
Brandy Brooks? Dr. Brandy Brooks?
We're majority minority city, fifty-one.
Tanya Fernandez Anderson?
Let's make it equitable, sixty percent.
Joa De Pina?
I would say fifty-five percent.
Marissa Luce?
Fifty-one.
Lorraine Payne Wheeler?
Fifty.
Angelina, Angie Camacho?
Tanya and I are in the same boat, sixty, forty split, baby. Let's do it.
Okay. So that, that one felt like the price is right. And the next, the next one, I'm glad, I'm glad no one said one, one. That's a very good thing. Next up, we, here we go. This is actually one that's near and dear to my heart. The question here is, should the city of Boston take the zoning board of appeals out of the process for approving cannabis stores in, in the city of Boston? Yes or no? Currently, the zoning board of appeals is actually the beginning of the process for cannabis in the city of Boston. So again, should we take the zoning board of appeals out of the process for approving cannabis stores? Let's start with Lorraine Payne Wheeler.
No. Was this a lightning round?
This is lightning and there's.
So I'm going to say, no, the ZVA should not be removed from the process.
Th- thunder round. Next up, Angie Camacho?
I'm with Lorraine. No, the people still need to speak.
Leon Rivera?
No.
Marissa Luce?
No.
Joa De Pina?
No.
Tanya Fernandez Anderson?
I'm not sure. I'd have to do more research.
Dr. Brandy Brooks?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. And actually, and again, also, Tanya, thank you for that transparency. It, one of the things as a, as a city council is absolutely critical is sometimes we don't know, right? And I get, I want to give, give you props and I want to actually applaud that because there are things that we have to figure out. So props on that. Rent control. Yes or no? Dr. Brandy Brooks?
Yes, but it's going to have to be state.
Tanya Fernandez Anderson?
Rent stabilization, but not control.
Lorraine Wheeler, Lorraine Payne Wheeler?
Uh, yes.
Angie Camacho?
I agree, rent stabilization, not rent control because a number of seniors will be, will be.
Thunder, thunder, thunder cats.
Lightning.
Leon Rivera?
Yes.
Marissa Luce?
Yes.
Joa De Pina?
No.
Okay. Two, two last ones and we're, we're, we're closing it out, ladies and gentlemen. I get to hand it back over. So what should the? So, uh, what should the IDP be, uh, raised to? And so, so folks who, who don't know what the IDP is, currently in the city of Boston, if you're building, uh, above ten units, uh, you're required to, uh, set aside thirteen, uh, per- percent of those units. Um, and so, um, obviously twenty and on, and, and if you build a hundred, that'll be thirteen of those units would be required to be, uh, quote unquote affordable. We won't get into the fact that affordability in the city of Boston can go hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I digress, but what should, uh, the affordability or the IDP, uh, be, uh, raised to in the city of Boston with the assumption that you would, uh, want to raise it? So this is a numeric, uh, answer. Uh, let's go with, uh, Marissa Louz.
Say, um, the same thing. This is, this is something that I'm fully trying to educate myself around, so.
That we, we're, and we're good, we're good with that and we, and we know that you'll come back, um, and with a, with an answer. Leon Rivera.
I would say forty percent and also in, uh, incentivizing, uh, a hundred percent affordable housing developers so they can actually create that housing.
And I, I didn't get to throw the thunder at you. Um, uh, Dr. Dr. Brandy Brooks.
Add a minimum thirty three percent and home ownership opportunities.
Uh, Tanya Fernandez Anderson.
I would say twenty five percent with rental own programs in there.
Joa De Pina.
I, I would say about thirty percent, um, that with, uh, some stipulations.
Thank you. L- Lorraine Payne Wheeler, did we get you on that one?
Thirty percent.
Okay, did I get everybody? Okay.
No.
A- Angie Camacho.
At least twenty five percent with the room for collaborative conversation to get to the right number.
Okay, dope. So the last question on this amazing multi-ward, uh, platform that we have here and, um, this opportunity to hear from these amazing seven candidates for District Seven. Uh, this question is, um, safe consumption sites, yes or no? Start with Joa De Pina. Okay, uh, no, I, I, I.
No.
For, for those, yes, uh, no for Joa De Pina. Uh, Lorraine Payne Wheeler.
Not at Mass and Cass anyway.
Not on our day one.
Marissa Louz. Uh, M- M- Marissa. You gotta get off, off mute. Yep.
Sorry, no.
Okay, thank you so much. Angie Camacho.
Starting outside of Mass and Cass and then when we're stable, we can bring it to Mass and Cass, but not starting here.
Y'all gonna make me throw some thunder at y'all. Okay, uh, Le- Leon Rivera.
No.
Uh, Dr. Brandy Brooks.
No, it needs to be decentralized.
And Tanya Fernandez Anderson, did I get you?
Yes, as long as we're following the same standards of, uh, decentralizing service.
Okay, um, so ladies and gentlemen, I want y'all to give yourself a round of applause. I actually, no, 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 no round of applause. I want you to take your right hand, turn it around and go back slowly, go back, go, go, go back and give yourselves a pat on the back. Give yourselves a, that's, that's the, that, that is, uh, the, uh, social distancing way to do this because we, we, you know, we, we, we had to deal with all the stuff that's out there. I want to give each of you, uh, credit for, this was an awesome, awesome debate. Um, I, I love the fact, um, that, uh, folks were also even able to say, you know what, I don't, I don't know that much about that. I want to, I want to drill down, um, and, and figure out, uh, more about that. I also love the collegiality and the fact that we all need to understand, we're not running against each other. And actually, I'm not running. You are not running against each other. Uh, you are actually running for the district and for the people of the district. And I don't believe there's winners and losers. And this is a person, I've, I've won sometimes, I also lost sometimes, but there's not winners, winners or losers because each of you will stay engaged, uh, in, uh, the community, uh, regardless of what happens at the ballot box. We know that we will see, uh, and see your, your, your feet on the ground. We know we will hear your voices, some, some more than others. I won't go there. But we will definitely, uh, continue to have an amazing field of community leaders in District Seven. And I, I will just let you know, it gives me so much pride. Um, I'm, I'm just beaming over here, um, that, the, the work that you've done thus far. Um, I will just give y'all a secret. Go talk to the people. All, I love the Facebook stuff. I love all this. That's cool and all that other stuff. Um, I will let you know, your, your wins, your votes and all of the support that each of you need. Um, I noticed, I know we've been in this little, this physical little box for this past year. Get out of the damn box and go talk to some folks. Um, and as we do that, I'm gonna go ahead and, and, uh, turn it over to my friend, um, Marie Turley. Again, thank all of the ward committees. You folks rock. And also, get, let's also give props to the ward committees for coming together to actually do this and the fact that we're not doing this like twenty times over, um, and I have, and all my hair would be gray if that was the case. So, uh, let's, let's go, uh, and go ahead and hand it, uh, back to Marie, Marie Turley. Again, props to each of, of you. You did a spectacular job. I am so, so proud to live in District Seven. And if someone parks in front of my driveway like they did last night, I will be absolutely calling you. Marie, Marie Turley.
I don't know.
I don't know which, which is worth running as a candidate with the kind of courage and strength that everybody showed tonight or coming after Tito.
As a speaker.
But first of all, we want to thank Tito on behalf of the entire committee for the amazing job he's done and for his commitment, which came across in everything that he said. Somebody just muted me, so, okay.
We can still hear you. We were hearing you from both phone and, and, and computer.
Yep.
Okay, so you can hear me? That's fine. You can hear me?
Definitely hear you, Marie. We got you.
Okay, yeah. And I'm, and I'm only in JP. Imagine. No, seriously. This is amazing. First to the candidates. Thank you for your courage. Thank you for your commitment to the neighborhood and the perspectives you brought to Tito who pulled it all together for us. And I want to let people know that over, we had people getting bounced out throughout the night because the attendance was so high. And that could only happen because of the collaboration that came together to do this. It was the community groups, the Fenway Civic Association, the Fenway Community Center, the Fenway CDC, the South End Forum, Urban Edge, Garrison Trotter, Madison Park Development, Mass Vote, NAACP Boston, Project Right, Franklin Park Coalition, No Aester Crew, Community Dot and the Franklin Park Coalition. Every part of the district, every part of the wards engaged are covered by their community groups and, and their friends were on the call tonight and on the Zoom tonight. And it was great to look around and see so many faces that have been engaged in work in our community for decades and people that we are meeting and getting engaged for the first time. That's how we're going to keep District Seven strong. And so we're asking all of you to continue to stay engaged. And if you're not a member of a ward committee, consider joining. The wards that came together, Ward Four tonight with Jonathan Cohen and Carol Lasky. And we give a shout out to Jonathan for being the motivator who got us all to the table in the first place. If you're in Ward Eight, Joanne Keith was on the call, doing amazing work there, bringing that ward committee back. Ward Nine, which has had strong leadership and is continuing to grow. Um, Ward Twelve, Haseeb was on the call and Kristen was on the call with us and brought great work and our long, a longstanding, hardworking ward committee. And then Ward Eleven, which is JP and Roxbury, we're honored to be able to be part of District Seven and to be able to participate in this important debate. So one last absolute total shout out to everyone with a huge thank you. Stay engaged, stay involved and vote on September fourteenth. And thank you to everyone. Have a great evening and take good care. Vote, vote, vote. Take good care all.
Well, tonight.
And, oh, and to Lauren Madison who kept us on track, on target and, and, uh, was, it managed the entire thing for us. So we got, all got to relax when we knew Lauren was gonna take on that job. Tito was gonna moderate and we had the vast number of twelve community groups supporting the work of the ward. Doesn't get better than that. Go District Seven. Thank you to the candidates and have a good evening.
Are we having a closing, are we having a closing statement?
Actually, you know what? We're actually, what, you know what, uh, Joa, we're, we're gonna, we're not gonna do, do that, um, unless, unless folks uh, would, 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 would want that. I think, I think we've done, you've done an amazing, amazing job. Um, let's close out on those doors. Let's close out on those phones and let's make sure on Sep- September fourteenth, uh, we, we, we make it happen.
We just, we asked Tito to run with it and he did and we appreciate it so much. He's been a candidate. He knew what it took to drive it home. Thanks, Tito. Thank you for the candidates for being flexible. Good luck. See you on the doors. See you on the streets and see you in the neighborhood. Take good care.
And great job, everyone. I look forward to seeing you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Have a good night. Kristen, take good care. Take good care, team.